Welcome to your favorite and dependable Lens African TV. It's a media outfit that is out to be to your door. The social, economic, cultural and political advancement of our society. But this time around, you are all aware that the presidential election is coming up next month. That is February. And that is why we are out to town to seek the opinion, to meet people on their pick. And that is why the Lens African TV is at Ondo, the hometown of Chief Shagun Adegwoke, who is a BOT member of the People's Democratic Party. Sir, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
I just mentioned your name and as a BOT member, but please can we meet you more?
Well, I'm a Lega practitioner, I'm a lawyer by profession and a politician by calling. I've been in politics for over fifty years in this country. In 1979, I was one of the commissioners under the team, in the team of the late Pahmaeke Laddikuli Ajashin. I was a commissioner for Lanzar House and leader commissioner for information and local government. After that, I served under several governors. I was a special advisor to Agabu, when he was governor of Ondo State. I was also a commissioner under Chief Adi Adi Farati. I was a member of Nadeko and a strong supporter, a member of Afeni Ferry. As a matter of fact, I was the publicity secretary for Nadeko in Ondo State from 1983 to 1992. I have been in politics and I've had the advantage of rubbing shoulders of being in the company of the veterans of the olden days. Like people like Chief Obafemi Awulowo, Chief Wesseli Akitola, a host of others. Who led Nigeria or who led the southwest then in the Second Republic. I was the Public Affairs Secretary of UPN. I was also the commissioner for information of that party, of that government in 1979 to 1983. And today, I'm a member of PDP. I'm not only a member, I'm a leader in my own right of the Ondo West PDP. I am also a BOT member, Board of Trust member of the People's Democratic Party of Nigeria. I represented Ondo State, particularly Ondo West.
Thank you very much for this beautiful information you have given to us, sir. Sincerely speaking, I want to say kudos to you and you are still looking cute and agile.
Thank you very much.
Sir, this is Lens African TV, where on Nigeria decides 2023. And by the special grace of God, next month, February, people will trip out on mass to exercise their franchises.
Twenty fifth precisely.
Twenty fifth precisely. Sir, what's your take on the development so far?
Well, I don't want to sound like a pessimist, but I have my reservation about the fourth coming election. I pray to God Almighty that it holds. There are a lot of events militating against the holding of the election on the February 25, 2023. But by the grace of God, I pray the election will hold. Now, to be sincere, the atmosphere as it is now is still not conducive for peaceful election. Look at the attacks on Nynek offices, look at the violence being perpetrated in the east. Look at all these things that are going on in Nigeria at the moment. Look at the, the interesting quarrel between the political parties, particularly APC and PDP. If a political party who is in government can accuse the federal government of wanting to sabotage the election, one should be very weary and scared where we are going. The time is almost here, twenty fifth of February, today is twenty six. So we have few days, not quite less than a month to have the election. And all these things are happening in Nigeria. Violence has been recorded in some areas, carnages, volatile area. Take Imu State for example, look at what is happening in Imu. A lot of things is happening that is giving any sensible Nigerian a concern whether this election will hold. But my prayer and by the grace of the assurance of Ineke itself, that no matter what happened, they will hold the election. That is my hope. I hope the election will hold.
Thank you very much. Sincerely speaking, I want to appreciate you, sir, for not being a partisan politician. You know why I said this? Because it may mention that there are heels and cries in all these political parties, especially the present government and your own party, PDP. Sir, with this idea of yours, sir, what is manifesto? How do people go about campaigning? Because you hear from this angle, you hear from this angle, lambasting themselves. Is that, is that campaign for your own political party? What I mean by someone's own political party, when this party A will be accusing party B of this or that, but they are not telling us what they are going to do for the society?
No, I, I, I don't agree with that. They don't tell us what they are going to do for society. You may, when you get to that stage, you must divide it into political parties. For example, Peter Obi tells people who cares to listen, what he will do for the people. It may not be deep, but he is able to say something that I will do this, I will do that for Nigeria if you, you vote me into power. Secondly, if you take the presidential candidate of PDP, Alaji Attiku Abubaka, he did not only tell Nigerians what he would do, he analyzed it into details. How he is going to cure his security, how he is going to save the economy of the country, how he is going to prepare a good program for Nigerian education and health services. He said very many things. If you care to read what he has said in some of his fora, where he had opportunity to hold meetings with a few numbers of people or a large number of people, you will discover that, I'm sorry to say this, not because I'm a PDP, but Attiku did not leave us in doubt of his capability and of how he is going to do it. If God hears his prayer and comes and becomes the president of Nigeria, Nigeria will be so, will be, will know what to hold him responsible for. Because he, Alaji, you promised you would do this, you would do this, this fit was made in so, so, so place. You said you would do this, you would do this, you said this at the Chatham House, you said you would do this, you said you would do that. You said this at interview with the British people when you went to Britain to hold consultation with them. They can court you and you can be held responsible for that. Sorry to say, the other party did not tell us about anything. They took us for granted. For example, all we are hearing is, is that Nigeria will be better. How are you going to make it better? Honestly and sincerely and with all sense of responsibility, the APC, who had put us down to this level at this moment, has not been able to tell us how they are going to improve what they have destroyed, how they are going to rebuild what they have destroyed, how they are going to put Nigeria on a better path, where there will be confidence, security, where the economy will grow, where we are not, where we will not be in fear of famine. Because if you look at the way prices are going up in Nigeria today, famine is imminent. That is scarcity of food is imminent. If you look at the economy today, you discover that Nigeria is almost worthless. Now, the money had, had been changed and people are crying. Whereas the people of Nigeria believe that a lot of Nigerian politicians have a lot of old currency notes in their house and they were justified by the stance of the National Assembly, crying that something which was to be, to end in January should be postponed to July. You can imagine that. You can, you can all see that the people are right. The Nigerian people are right by saying some polio have stored money in their houses and that is why they want extension. And few days ago, or shall I say yesterday or day before yesterday, the presidential candidate accused the federal government of wanting to sabotage the election. As a matter of fact, he was so specific to say it was him. The public, the government policy, the federal government policy was in that. It is strange that a man who is contesting over the platform of his party, who is in the, who, a party who is on the seat of power now, can now say with his own mouth that all the policies in Nigeria to make Nigeria better is aimed at him. I, I, I still find it difficult to understand. So you will see that the election should, or the preparation for the election should that certain people are ready for the election. Certain people are wiping off sentiment for the, for the election. Certain people are not even ready, not even prepared for the election. And what is more, we have seen it on television, not this, not saying it because of any political party. Anybody wants to be president of Nigeria must be very sound that only a healthy brain and with a healthy body can carry the weight of Nigerian government. It is not about, you don't have to be a footballer, yes, you don't have to have the strength of a block carrier, but you must be healthy upstairs and physically. If you are short of that, honestly, it would have been another mistake even to treat somebody who is not sound in mind and in body. That is so far in Nigeria, politics is going. This time around, it is my belief that we will show all kinds of sentiments. We will look at the records of each contestant, we will look at their experience. There will be no cause to say a particular candidate comes from here, come from there, come, no. Who is fit to lead Nigeria? Because Nigeria at the moment is undergoing an excruciating pain in the hands of maladministration, in the hands of, shall I say, a sensitive corruption. We, 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 the man who we had, who we go to, who led Nigeria now has a lot to do. When I see those who are hopping around, they want to be president, I begin to ask myself whether they are aware of the fact that Nigerian has, let me use a simple word, has spoilt, that needs a great political surgery for, before Nigeria can recover. Like one governor said, Nigeria is suffering from, from APC, who made the government, they are suffering from cancer. And PDP who is in opposition is suffering from malaria. So if we look at both, we discover that Nigeria itself is suffering from cancer. Nigeria itself is a terminal disease unless we are, we are able, we are able to present a man who can carry very rapidly a surgical operation and apply the real medicine. I'm afraid Nigeria may die of this so-called cancer.
Thank you very much, chief. You are still on viewing the Lens African TV. Sincerely speaking, you've been listening and viewing the Legal Luminary, a political icon who knows his onions, because it's a person that knows his onions that will tell you history and you know how far he has been coming in the political arena. Yes, we now go on break. When we come back, we continue with the interview. Sir, we appreciate you immensely for giving us these vital informations. But the security aspect is still there. You hear of kidnapping, you hear of arson, you hear of these and that. Is it not a threat to this coming election?
Yes, in you, in you, in you analyze my earlier speech, I said, what is happening in Nigeria today does not create a kind of conducive atmosphere for a peaceful election. You see, there is one thing that is setting. Nigeria has failed in the security sector. Nothing can be worse. They lack the idea of how to control it. You can imagine where Boko Haram people are caught and where, when they say they are pardoned and they are recruited back to the army. Can I be a solution? Can I be a solution? Look at our policemen. I, I have pity for the policemen. They are killed jokingly. When you read some of the news and see how our policemen are being slaughtered and in northern part of Nigeria, the security aspect of Nigeria is new. The bandits, your local men go as far as to your private house. All bars are kidnapped in their palace. Things cannot deter it more than that. So when some people see Nigeria is a failed country, I find it difficult to argue with them. A failed country is a country where there is no security. You cannot travel, you cannot travel from Ondo to Ore without, without the fear of being kidnapped. You cannot travel from Ondo now to Karak without the fear of being kidnapped. You cannot even travel from Ondo to Lagos without the fear of being kidnapped. So the thing had broken down, come irretrievably for now. Who will retrieve it? That is why Nigeria must be careful in this election. There shall be no, there, there must be no sentiment. You see, there are, one thing I want to say, sir. Nigerians are selfish, are selfish people. Some people are putting up a presidential candidate, knowing full well that the cabas around him will be governing the country. If you love Nigeria, it's a thing of the, it's a thing of the eyes. There are certain people, like I've said earlier, who are not fit to lead Nigeria. If you take the moral aspect out of it, physical aspect, health-wise. If the president sits in an office, probably he will sign more than 100 files in a day. He will read as many memos as possible. He will take critical decisions on issues. He will have to, some, some governors, even ordinary governors, let me say, they will sit in their office till 11:00 PM at night. When I was a member of the State Executive Council during the budget session, we will sit from morning till night, midnight, twelve midnight. Do you think a president who does not have a good health can, can face the ordeal of office? Of course not. What will we, what shall we have? We will then have minions, rascals, towns who supported him to get there, wanting to rule Nigeria, ruling Nigeria by what you call a kind of cabal. And the cabal I'm looking at in certain aspects of, of, of the candidates are cabals of the, in the streets. And that is why they are packaging that which is unacceptable, which they want to serve to Nigeria. But I pray for the sake of the young ones coming, that those who does not want Nigeria or those who are praying for Nigeria to fail will not get there. We will get a good man who understands the politics of Nigeria and who is aware that Nigeria has gone so bad and rocky and who will know how to repair it.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, let's start from your own unit, ward, local government and even the state. Because as a BOT member, how do you feel about the collection of this PVC? Is it moving nicely or are people not still sovereign in getting their PVC? I'm sure you'll be getting reports.
It is, it is not absolutely difficult now. And as far as I am concerned and with the information reaching me from my lieutenants and party members, the Nynek appear to be doing well. They appear to be distributing the thing and because they go to each ward every day except, I think they play Saturday and Sunday. And people are very to collect if the, if the, shall I say, if the PVC is available. For example, in one of the wards in Ondo West Local Government, there was a time more than several hundreds of people were there waiting to collect their PVC. And some of them were very, were successful. And so in another ward, I think the distribution as far as Ondo West is concerned is, is been fair.
Thank you very much. Before we round up the program, sir, we've been talking about this presidential election and all that work. Do you believe in adjusting the country with structural adjustments? Let me put it that way. Structural adjustment, people have been clamoring that there should be, the, the country should be structured in, in these zones. Do you believe in that at this present situation where the country is moving on?
No, you see, well, it's not structural adjustment. They are, they are saying Nigeria should be restructured, should be restructured in the sense that, for example, one thing that is important that we must know. We call as a federal republic of Nigeria. There is nothing federal about us. It is unitary system of government. So if you want to have the real federal government in Nigeria, there are certain things that must be done. States must have some independence. The, the, shall I call it, the, the natural resources of all other states should be restructured. The percentage of who takes what, like the, like the petroleum sector, they must look into it. Then all states must be empowered to be the owner of their states. So each state can adjust according to his needs and according to what he gets from the state, according to the tax collects, collected, according to the, what shall I call it? The mineral resources available in that state. So every state will cut his coat according to his cloth. And they will move, they will develop according to their own space. So it will be easier. For, for example, what are we now? We are like minions under the, under Goliath, that is the federal government, the octopus, who has all the power. All they do every, every end of the month is to dole out money. That will stop, if there is a restructure, it will restructure the government. Every state will, will own his own. All that we need to do is to donate to the federal government. Unlike now, when they sit on the whole thing and they distribute and they dole out little, little fund to states. Whereas the quick ledge that many states are able to pay salary, they are able to pay their workers. So if you want to have a proper federal government, that should go. Every state should be a controller of his resources and his taxes. Then they are independent of the federal government in, in, to a large extent. And the federal government will only be given power on defense and few other power status.
Thank you very much. In a Jivi, sir, please can you just in a Jivi advise to Nigerians as the election is on the door?
Yes, my advice to Nigerians is that this time, we should be honest with ourselves. We should stop all these unnecessary breakings. We should, we should stop all these ten governments, five governments, six governments, no. We should all come together and look at these candidates and pick the one we think is the best. It, it doesn't matter, the best may still not be good enough, but in this respect, I think the best will be good enough. We should look at capability, look at health-wise, look at experience, look at the moral background. Look at very many things that we should, that will make a good president. So we don't want a repetition of the past where the president could not pick his ministers for six good months. And where, where he spent about 12 months in a, in a health discussion to Britain. We don't want that kind of thing to happen to us. If it does, then Nigeria is gone. So I beg Nigerians sincerely, set aside party affiliation. Look at the candidates critically, examine them, read about them. The safer rumor from real facts. And we arrive, we all, we see that we all know who is the best of the lot. There are seventeen candidates contesting. One will surely be the president. But we Nigerians, if we can educate the Nigerians who are not as educated as we are, then we will pick the right person. This is not a case of giving, like what happened to us last time. Road burning. And that's why some people are glamoring and saying that the And that's why some people are gambling and saying that the change of currency, they, they want to buy votes. So the, the, the central bank order will not allow them to be able to buy votes. So they are crying, they are crying and buying votes is part of eh, part of what destroyed Nigeria.
Thank you very much, chief. Sincerely speaking, we appreciate you. Nigerians, you've heard it all from Chief Shebwadigoki, BOT member of the People's Democratic Party, in Legal Luminary who knows his audience. On the next time, where we bring you another important person on these channels, I remain yours, Ronnie Akin Awulokbe. Stay blessed.
Welcome to Nigeria decides twenty twenty-three on Lens Africa Television. Join us daily on this channel by five PM as we bring to you the latest news and updates on the twenty twenty-three general elections, featuring exclusive interviews with political parties, analysts, election observers, security agencies, grassroots people, market women, social cultural groups, NGOs, CSOs, traditional rulers, community and religious leaders. Keep watching Lens Africa Television to be informed and not deformed. This is Nigeria decides twenty twenty-three. Stay connected.